Judges to the flag. Mr. Chairman, would you stand under guard? The judge will be in justice for our.
Thank you. First order, as is usual, is that public comments? Do we have any public comments? Okay, Vic. Come up here, Vic. They can't hear you on the TV, so you gotta come up to the microphone.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and the Board of Select People. Tonight, I'm not gonna have any comments to make about what's been happening in town government. What I'd like to do is to wish everyone a happy Hanukkah, healthy and happy and a merry Christmas in keeping with the season. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vic. Same to you, sir. Anybody else?
I'm Mr. Carter, and I'm in the process of taking over the Boston Bean House.
Okay.
And I'm very happy to come into this town and like to work here.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? No? Okay. Okay, we're gonna accept some minutes. We have the minutes of December 5th, 2017 to consider, and the motions we move to accept and approve. The meeting minutes of December 5th, 2017, as shown. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions about the minutes of December 5th, 2017? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. Correspondence this week, we have A through G. Correspondence items are A through G this week, and the motion we move to accept the list of correspondences as shown, A through G. Give a second.
One second.
Any discussion on the correspondence items? Thanks.
No, I was just gonna say other than to thank Aaron for his conference of response to the Park Street petition that we received.
Yeah, right now. Okay. Have you had any comment back from that?
On the what?
Park Street. Since Aaron responded?
Oh, no, no. Yeah, we wanted to just follow up, because he provided that after our meeting, so just so it was in the public correspondence. I know the board got it much earlier than this, but we haven't, yeah, there hasn't been any follow-up discussion. You haven't received any, yeah, so.
Okay. Any others? The incident report from China Ruby?
Is Lieutenant Noble here?
He was, he was stepped out.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we could take that out of water until Lieutenant, I'm not prepared to speak to that, so.
All right, well, we'll table that, and we'll come back to the correspondence when he comes back, and then we'll just move on to the consent agenda.
Yeah. Is Jack here? Yeah, Jack's here, yeah. So we could do the, we could take item eight. Oh, no, the Girl Scouts, right?
Yeah, so we'll just skip to the item number six. Girl Scouts, Troop 78005 request.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Christina Carroll, and I am one of the troop Girl Scout leaders of 78055. I'm here with Melissa Ryan, our other troop leader, as well as four out of our seven scouts. Two of them are performing at the Fowler Band Concert tonight and couldn't be here, Hannah Peters and Megan Grunstrom, and the other one missing is Sarah Matson, sick unfortunately. We would like to first thank you for adding us into your busy agenda. The girls have been preparing for tonight for weeks and are excited to share their ideas with you. We have prepared portfolios for all of you to review at your leisure. This year, our troop has decided to participate in the Bronze Award. This is the highest award a junior girl scout can earn.
Thank you.
The troop has been brainstorming ideas for this project and has decided they would like to focus on the Assabett River Rail Trail. The girls, their friends, and their families have greatly enjoyed the addition of the rail trail. We are here tonight to offer some suggestions to help enrich the trail and better the Maynard community. Each girl has prepared a brief explanation of our ideas.
Hi, my name is Mia Carroll, and today I will be speaking about painted trash cans. We love the idea of painted trash cans. It's our number-one choice for the Bronze Award project. At one of our October meetings, the troop took a walk on the rail trail behind CVS and collected an entire bag of trash in a little under 30 minutes. We think the idea of painted trash cans would not only spruce up the trail, but would eliminate the amount of litter throughout the community. We were thinking about asking local companies to sponsor a trash can. The company would decide on its design for their can, and the troop would assist in fundraising for the project.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Emma Ryan. Speaking of cleaning up the rail trail, another idea we have is installing dog waste stations throughout the trail. We know this is an issue through social media sites. In years past, the troop has noticed that there used to be dog waste stations in certain areas of the town. Our idea would be to raise funds to install these stations in busy areas of the trail. Another goal the troop has would be to supply the bags needed for these stations for one year.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sophie Matson. Another way that we think would help beautify the trail is a historic town mural. Recently, our troop was visiting Hudson for our end-of-the-year team building event. This historic mural on Main Street caught our eye. We would like to represent Maynard's history in a trail mural designed and painted by a local artist. The troop would assist in the research, design, and fundraising for this mural. Another idea we love for the town's trail is adding library swap stations. We've noticed this station at the Boys and Girls Club, and we think this is a great idea to incorporate along the rail trail. The troop would fundraise as well as hold a book drive to stock the stations. We all love to read, and we think this is a great way to share that joy with others, young and old.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Isabella Burke. Our final idea would involve the Maynard Police Department. We would like to host a bike safety day where kids can learn the safety guidelines for bike riding on the trail. We would contact the Maynard Police to assist us in planning this day. We would hold safety demonstrations, proper safety gear lessons, and family activities. We think this is a terrific way to bring the Maynard Police Department and the community together for a fun family day.
Thank you.
So we wanted to say thank you again for adding us to the agenda. The girls were really nervous to come tonight, and this was a great experience for them, because they've never been able to come to a meeting. If these ideas are not something that are gonna fit with the future rail trail plans, we're open to other ideas to help out in the community, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. So, I mean, I would think, you know, personally, I'm speaking just for myself, and I think it's all, they're all great ideas, and they're all great things. The only issue, we just have to check with the, you know, the state, right? It's a state.
Yeah, so, I'm just not certain what your timing is. What we're expecting, right now, it's still a state project. The Mass DOT controls technically the use in the rail trail. At this point, it's considered a state project until they turn it over to the town, and that's after final project, you know, checklist, punch list items are taken care of. We're anticipating that that likely would happen, you know, probably by May of 2018. So I'm not sure, you know, I guess we wouldn't be able to move forward or authorize access, technically, to the trail for some of those ideas that you have. Well, you know, I agree, I think they're all great initiatives, but I don't know what your timing is as it relates to, you know, to moving forward with this.
I have a question. Would we authorize, let's say, the trash cans? If that was an idea, they could still move forward with, like, painting them and getting them ready with the idea that they go to the, yeah, right?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Please allow me to the folks to have a safety day in spring also.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not, I mean, I think that everybody, anyone in town that didn't support every idea you guys had would be crazy, in my opinion, but we do have some crazy people. Some of us are sitting in this, in the front of this room, but I'm just worried about the piece, like you said, from the state perspective, and, you know, certainly if you need any more assistance from us as a board or town, you can certainly, you guys can come back and not be nervous, you know, and just ask us, and we'll help. We'll be glad to help. It's just a matter of making sure everything's in order, because it's still kind of in the hands of the state.
Okay.
But, great job. This is great. You guys wouldn't believe how many people come in here as adults that do not give us this type of product and information and want far more than you guys are asking for. You guys are actually donating and volunteering to do something, and this is fantastic, and we appreciate it. So congratulations, and anything you guys need, we can do.
Do you have that completion timeline?
And we're pretty open for it, yeah.
They would be great.
Okay, great.
Does the Bronze Award itself have a, like, a time length that it?
They would have to have it as when they were a junior, and they'll be a junior for the whole year.
Okay.
As long as we start it while they're a junior, yes.
Okay.
What are you looking for, an answer from us or direction or?
As soon as you have direction from the state, I guess, or if you, like, you just...
So I think to Melissa's point, I think, you know, if the direct, if we agree that, you know, the trash barrel, and you guys thought that was the best choice, I think, you know, that could come regardless. At some point, it's going to be turned over to us.
Okay.
You know, whether it happens in May, July, August, April, you know, that's sort of irrelevant. I think in the meantime, you know, we could certainly agree to, you know, logistically store them in a place until the trail is open, you know, if you guys had, you know, finished them, that type of thing.
Sure, and we would have to start fundraising.
But it's just a matter of, you know, you being able to visibly see the finished product out on the trail is really the holdback. But as far as, you know, you moving forward with it, I don't think the board has any...
You just have the timeframe, sorry, on getting the local businesses to support you as well, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. We need to fundraise and reach out to local businesses, so.
The only thing you guys might want to do is talk to Aaron in the DPW.
Right.
And just so you know what...
How many numbers?
How many, but what type of barrel is gonna hold the paint?
Okay.
What's the best barrel, what's the best paint, you know, all that type of stuff, so that the hard work you guys do doesn't, you know, fail.
That lasts.
Listen, I'll go for two, I'll go for two things. I'd go for trash barrels and the dog waste stations, so.
Absolutely.
I think there's a lot of people that would be in favor of both, but...
I love everything, that's why I'm like, oh, and then the libraries, the little libraries, I love those.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, I don't know, do we need an official answer, or?
No.
Do we need to vote? I mean, we certainly, we, I think we can say that we, you know, we support.
And we can get started.
And if you guys do, and, yeah, feel free, and if you need more help from us, or there's other things you might consider, just feel free.
You can reach out to my office or directly to Aaron McClosco, the DPW director.
Great.
Between the two of us, we can, you know, help along the process and get it done.
And there's also been the, like, the public art process that's been going on through the town planners, that might be another place to kind of loop into in terms of sources for some idea generation and painting, too.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you very much. Thanks, guys.
Send us a donation form so we can donate to the trail.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay.
Lieutenant Noble's back.
Back to Lieutenant Noble. And the correspondence on the, we have the incident report from the China Ruby.
They were actually first.
Are you gonna speak about the incident report for China Ruby?
Sure, I'll just say something a little bit, what we came...
So there's, there's, right? Okay, so there was one, yeah, there's one about the China Ruby.
And then later we have the...
There's two from the Elks later.
Yeah, there's two on that.
Yeah, the only one, the correspondence, that was, no action was...
All right, so we don't need, so we're not gonna need that one, then?
Item number seven is, we're here tonight, there's two incident reports, both from the same evening of November 11th, 2017, as it relates to the Maynard Lodge of Elks.
All right.
Yeah, the incidents involved, one was an intoxicated female in the bathroom, and another one was an intoxicated female that punched out a small window with the Elks. This was the night of the pub crawl, which is a big town event, many, hundreds and hundreds of people go to it and attend it. I had discussed it with other officers, and it's our conclusion that the Elks, this time, you know, the blame can't be faulted for them, because most of the people arriving there have already had a great deal to drink if they're getting there. Going forward, we would suggest that a four-hour detail be there, because there are so many people coming to the Elks at the end of it, that at least somebody there will be able to monitor. Their personnel is busy with too many other things, and this way, somebody could be there to monitor anybody coming in, because when this event first started, it was, you know, a few hundred people, and then get down. It's upwards over 1,000 people now, so, I mean, when everybody then comes to the Elks at the end, you know, it's kind of split up between the bars, there might be 100, 200 people in some of the bars, but when it gets down to the Elks, it's 500, 600 people. So that would be our suggestion going forward, is a four-hour detail, you know, that way the officer can be there and monitor people and tell them, like, yeah, no, you're too intoxicated, it's either time to go home or the PC.
Okay.
And one officer's enough, you think?
It's mostly townspeople, you know, they'll be able to call. I think, yeah, one officer should be good enough. If it becomes a big situation, almost that, too, but I don't think we've ever had more than one officer for any other Elks events.
They're all in the process. All right, so we're good, the Elks is good, and everything's, all right, it's okay by me, but, so, now what do we do with, now what do we do with the two, we don't have, there's no action to take?
No, I don't think there's any recommended, you know, action, disciplinary action. I mean, I think, as Lieutenant noted, you know, it's the last stop of a, you know, a long event, and, you know, I think with the detail officer, they can get ahead of any issues coming in, you know, potentially, at least visibly be able to see folks that just are beyond at that point.
And that's just something that the event organizers will have to work next year.
Yeah, exactly.
What about the earlier stops, though? I mean, we've had concerns about over-serving in general in town, and I'm also a little concerned about people operating under the influence. I mean, our police staff is only so big, and making sure we can monitor that and keep the roads safe, not just the people on the pub crawl, but just general people on the road and in the area. I mean, I don't know if Lieutenant Noble has any ideas or thoughts. I've never attended it, so I don't know what it really looks like.
And I've participated in it.
Yeah, I mean, there's a few other, the PC, kind of everybody goes back to, too, having a detail officer there, wouldn't be a bad idea. The brew house, that starts there, and people are pretty much done by there by early afternoon. And as it goes, somebody probably at the PC or even just like a downtown, you know, where they split it.
Is it mostly walking, anyway?
Yeah, I mean, almost all people are walking, you know, there's, but some people do park, I think. They have shuttles, they have planned a lot of it, and try to take care of people, like, going to the hotel, they have a shuttle going to a hotel and conquer the whole night, and it's available, you just call up, and, so, you know, there are, they have put in things in place, it's just, it's grown in size. It's just to keep up with it.
And they also do the escort for the major move going from, like, the major group movement from the PC to the Elks. I know they have the detail, because they do the bagpipes, right?
Yeah, well, and the Elks is just the biggest venue, so, you know, more people, like, some people skip places to go, it's just too crowded, but you can fit, you know, the 500 or 600 people in the Elks, and that's where the final, exactly, the final thing's going.
I mean, that's what I've heard.
No, I've seen...
Rumor, speculation. It's alleged. All right, so we don't have to take any action, and then...
It'd be something we'll discuss with the event planners with Flo, you know, before next year's event.
I think we should definitely think about what Melissa was talking about, there's definitely some opportunities for over-serving before they even get to the Elks, so, I'm, having not participated, because I've been on the board, I don't want to put myself in a position where I'm out there with 500 townspeople drinking.
Or the subject of a future incident report.
Yeah, so, I would say, what, I'm not familiar with what the establishments do to actually check people at the door and from serving, so.
The PC is pretty good about, is actually very good, they have somebody at the door in this. The other establishments, it's a little hard, they're not used to having that kind of volume, that come in all at once, you know, and checking.
Maybe it's just a matter of thinking about...
It's an older crowd, for the most part, there are some young kids, but the vast majority are, you know, probably at least 30 or above.
Oh, that's, that's old.
Seasoned.
I have kids that old.
They get in trouble, they cause problems, it's usually year-20s.
You're killing me, Mike. You're killing me.
Maybe, I don't know whether it's worth maybe thinking about, just a reminder out to the establishments, just on like, because, I mean, it's one thing, carding is one thing, so you're not serving underage, but I don't know if there's anything from tips training or something, that there's like handouts that they have about being attuned to over-serv, like, people who are being over-served?
No matter what in their tips training, if somebody comes up to the bar and gets it, the problem is, is people are going up there already in two or three, because you can't get to the bar, because it's too crowded.
We have...
Somebody goes up their bar.
We have occupancy level concerns, Mike, in these places.
That's fire. You know, it has never been really an issue, but, yeah, I mean...
I was just wondering, I guess you said that, you know, it's gotten to be bigger, and, you know, if it keeps continuing to get bigger...
Crowd usually spreads out, like, if it's that crowded, they just move ahead.
Well, that's what I mean by the Elks, like, the seven or eight establishments that are in it, so people just kind of mix in all the other ones, but then they all filter down to the Elks to the fire.
At the end, yeah.
Hey, I mean, they're not down there that long, but, you know, when they get there, they're feeling good, let's call it.
So, I mean, we have plenty of time before the next event, it's another 11 months, but, you know, certainly, we issued a permit, so if we have questions along those lines, you know, next year, we can always ask the planners to come in and just talk about it, just like we do with, you know, several other permits, so. I mean, I appreciate the information about these two, and, you know, glad it really ended up being, you know, not the Elks' fault, and everything worked out.
Yeah, we just couldn't see how we could put the blame on them, they, we don't know when those people got to the establishment or did this, and the majority of the drinking was done prior to them getting there.
Okay.
Flo, thank you for coming to two meetings.
So, Mr. Chair, before we let the lieutenant off the hook, I don't know, you haven't approved the correspondence, I don't know if there was anything you wanted to ask specific about the China Ruby one?
No, you did.
Or if you're good with that?
The China Ruby one?
Yeah.
I was, I was working that night, too, so, that was just a call, two guys pushing, they called us before it got out of hand. We were there in less than 30 seconds, they were already gone.
Yeah, okay.
It was, you know, they did what they're supposed to do.
Yeah, exactly.
They did, you know.
Yeah, that was my understanding, just while you're here, if they had a question.
I didn't know the guys.
Yeah, we never identified them, there was never any, anything else to go on.
No idea who that guy is.
The establishment, they handled it appropriately.
They were outside, they heard arguing, they could see them, and it looked like they were gonna start the fight, and they went out and said, hey, we just called the police, and they left.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So we're gonna approve the correspondences.
Yeah, we still have the correspondence and the consent, and we'll do that now. All right, we thought Mike was gonna be part of the correspondence, okay?
Yeah, right.
All right, Mike, thank you, thank you, Flo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so the correspondences, that was the questions about the incident report. Does anybody else have any questions on item four of the correspondences before we close that one out?
Nope.
No? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. And then we get to the consent agenda, which is A through D, two small things, and then the usual cemetery deeds.
Cemetery deeds, I'm Mr. X.
Yes.
All right. How much is a cemetery plot?
800 bucks, and $10 for the certificate.
How many left? Eight, 10.
How many can fit in a plot?
Two deep.
Two deep?
No, cremated, what if you don't want to get cremated?
And you don't get to fit too many people in that?
All right. All right. So, consent agenda, is move to accept and approve the consent agenda, items A through D as shown. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor? So it's $800 plus $10 for the permit fee?
Eight, 10.
Yeah.
It's a bargain.
Really does seem like a bargain.
Everyone kicking a bucket soon?
It's a really long lease. San Francisco's 60.
I heard the Amory Tomb is for sale.
Perpetual Care Fund would love to triple it.
I have a crypt, I have a crypt in Forest Hills with 22 spots, if anyone wants some room.
Is that what you do, you're price shopping?
That's, can we change the name on the outside of the crypt?
My grandfather bought it, and he buried his mother and his brother there, and no one else has wanted to go, so there's 22 spots left, and it's now down to me.
Wow.
I only need one seat.
Don't have many visitors, I don't think.
So, all right, item number eight, beep grant application. Mr. McKean?
Jack was there. He had a series face on today, too.
All right, let me read the motion, and then we'll have the discussion, Jack. Move to authorize the town administrator to review and approve the expenditure of funds up to $1,556 from the Downtown Enhancement Fund for the submitted beep application for traditional awning as shown. A second.
One second.
Thank you.
Yep.
Here, up, Jack.
I'd like to introduce Elliot Prisby, who's the owner of Metro West Kung-Fu, if there are questions after I make a very brief remark.
Okay.
Elliot has been working with the town planner and with the Economic Development Committee for several weeks on several different aspects of his business. We have settled on three items, removal of some rather decrepit awnings that are above the front of the building, adding some graphics to the exterior, which will provide better advertising and better definition of the business, and the one that I like in particular, some significant enhancements of exterior lighting. And if you think about that particular part of Main Street, it's fairly dark, and so not only will it benefit his business, but it will add light along the middle of Main Street there. The total work was a little over $3,000, and this is a 50% reimbursement grant, in the amount that was just cited of $1,556 from available funds, so it's been through the process. The Economic Development Committee has both supported it and approved it, and Elliot is here to answer any questions that you have or talk to you about his business.
Thank you, Jack.
Okay. Questions, are we?
One question I always like to ask is, how did you find out about the beep process? Was it, did you seek them out, did someone tell you about it?
Someone told me about it, yeah. I believe it was, I believe it was you, Melissa. I think you were the one who told me that.
She may be seated here.
Yeah.
And the reason I'm asking is, because I love the idea of reusing the funds to actually enhance the downtown, right? And I just want to make sure that folks are, they know this program is out there, so that's why I ask.
Yeah, I have been, I've been excited about the prospect of doing that, and I've been trying to alert my other business, Maynard Business Friends downtown about it as well, so, trying to get the word out.
Great.
As an aside, Mr. Donovan, the town planner and I are in the process of literally putting together a couple of press releases touting the success and the uses of these kind of funds, they'll be released as soon as we get them worked out.
That's great.
Thanks, Jack.
I'll be the official spokesperson, right, though?
Yeah.
That's a ringing endorsement from Jack.
From the office.
I really appreciate the comprehensive, you know, presentation that you gave us, Elliot, as part of the submission that came in from the EDC, and, you know, all the work that you've done with your business, it's really great.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
Personally, it was like, I just enjoyed also kind of hearing, like, the story and the journey of your business, so, thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you.
I can't wait to see it, it looks so great already, and what you've done to it, so it can only get better.
I appreciate that, I think, I'm excited to see it, too, I think it'll help that area a lot, and I know that Muhammad Next Door at Roasted Peppers is also working on his storefront as well, so the two of us together can, you know, try to brighten that part of the downtown area a little bit, so.
It's always amazed me that that, it's such a populated, walking area, folks are in it, and it's always been that dark, since I've ever, it's amazing. So, you, I don't know, we just, we turn blind eye to it, because you're just used to it, and just forget, now you see the pictures and what it potentially could look like, it's, you're like, wow.
Big improvement.
Yeah.
Also, thank you for the EDC for the parameters they put in when I was at the meeting last week, I think that really helps to clarify things for downtown business owners, and I think it was the perfect direction to go to, as like a follow-up for the last time you were here. So, thank you.
And I think it was the perfect direction to go to as like a follow-up to the last time you were here. So, thank you.
We try.
Watching on TV, the many, many fans, can't actually see the presentation, but there's quite a, a bit of detail in the application that Mr. Prisby, uh, Brisby submitted. And that's what we're referring to. So, uh, thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you.
You're gonna let it be?
I can, I can email copies to anybody who, you know, is interested.
If you're online and the board of selectmen's package.
Oh, excellent.
You guys rent it? You guys rent the building?
Yes.
Okay.
It's that landlord that we've been discussing. Just that real.
Yeah, it is in the public session.
Negativity.
It's not negative. It's a fact.
Okay.
I'm excited to, to see the improvement down.
Thank you.
Wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, me too.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I couldn't remember. It was private, but there's this public, yeah.
What? We should learn some kung fu. We need something to do in the winter.
I, I will, could you leave the blinds up? Melissa and I will come down. We'll add an extra funding for that.
Reinforced windows part of this.
I do put the blinds in in case people get embarrassed, so.
I've met plenty of people who know martial arts. What am I gonna tell you? Not bothering anybody.
But if you do it, I can, I have the endorsement of Mr. Sol, you know? It's good for the business.
Let's see. No, I mean, I don't have any questions. It's, you know, it, it looks great. What's, on the last picture, what is that? It says co, net gift shop, coffee, tea?
Oh, that was a, uh, that was a photo, um, I tried to find a picture of a business that already existed online to show what it could look like. So this is obviously not my business, but this is, it's a similar.
Kung fu.
Yeah, no. I'm not adding coffee and tea, sorry.
Well, no, what Marissa, Melissa said, oh, and it looks like what you've already done. I'm like, you made it, you made it a gift shop and a coffee shop.
No, not quite, not quite.
It does say classes there, so you're kinda through it, but all right.
No, no dresses in the windows, so. This is what I'm hoping the final product will look like, uh, you know, with the glass, the glass front and the letters up on top along the side, so similar.
Now, what's the landlord have to say about it, since it's someone that we are all very familiar with?
Yes, uh, the landlord, uh, approved it. Uh, they, they're basically okay, uh, with, um, they looked at the application I submitted to you guys. They were fine with everything. He's signed it and, uh, all that good stuff. As an interesting aside, I suppose, they did require, um, their tenants on Main Street. They, they just recently, after I had already submitted the application to them, they came back, uh, to me and Muhammad at Roasted Peppers, letting us know that we, they were expecting us to remove the awnings, uh, of our own accord, um, by January fifteenth. So I don't, you know, I don't think it had anything to do with anything, but, um, that was the only, that was the only extra.
Remove the awnings that are there?
Yes.
Of pre-existing ones?
Yeah, so we were, I was going to have to do that whether or not this was, uh, approved by the EDC and the board of selectmen. I'm glad it was, obviously, but, um, it was, uh, that was the only, uh, extra input I got from them. They just decided to make it happen regardless, so.
So is he gonna tell you to take the new one down?
Well, I'm not putting new awnings up, so hopefully, yeah, hopefully not. It's, we're just removing the ones that are there.
Okay.
I think just from aesthetically, I think some of, you know, the more modern business looks, I think they're starting to get away from those awnings.
Yeah.
Do you find it interesting, as the negative voice about this, that business owners rented property with existing awnings and then were told to take them down at a cost to their own, like, without help from the landlord? Just that, right?
Everyone should take a negotiation class.
Invite the landlord there for a little kung fu. All right, I mean, no, I. Looks good. Anyone else have any questions? You know, Jack?
Two.
That's it? All right. So, all those in favor?
We have a motion. Was the motion, was it?
Yeah, we read the motion. Yeah, Melissa seconded it. Can we read it if you like?
Please, just, uh.
The motion was that we move to authorize the town administrator to review and approve the expenditure of funds up to one thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars from the downtown enhancement fund for the submitted beep application for traditional awning as shown. Melissa seconded it.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
All right. Should have signed that one. All right, Kevin, uh, next up is the special town meeting notice?
Yep, uh, next up is, uh, looking for the board to set the date, time and place for the special town meeting. Looking at what's proposed of a March twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen, uh, special town meeting. This is in follow-up to the, um, meeting of December fifth and the conversation with, uh, town council and the town planner um, with regards to the, um, update of the zoning use table for the marijuana, um, recreational marijuana, uh, purposes. And, uh, having to meet the, the timeline as it, as it relates to, uh, the effective date, um, of the regulation from the state of, of July one um, and the need to have a special town meeting, um, at, outside of, or earlier than our, um, standing annual, uh, May meeting. The, uh, town council, uh, is available that evening. Um, we've checked with, uh, all the folks and, um, Monday, March twenty-sixth is the recommended date, uh, for such meeting. Can you talk to Dick?
Okay. All right, there's a motion, um, motion is we move to approve special town meeting on Monday, March twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen at seven o'clock PM at Fowler School Auditorium. Do a second.
I'll second.
So just to further add to that, Mr. Chair, the, um, deadline for submittal of all draft warrant articles, um, would be Friday, February ninth at the close of business um, in time for, uh, finance committee recommendations as well as, uh, final warrant preparation and, and ultimately final board approval um, and publication in the Beacon Villager.
Yeah, exactly.
That timeline backed up with the forty-five day notice requirement, et cetera, um, puts us at, uh, February ninth and then for, effective for March twenty-sixth, um, special town meeting.
So Kevin, just so I'm clear, so right, I just wanna make sure I'm tracking, the intent of this one is driven by the marijuana zoning ex.
Exactly.
For which they're having.
So we've actually had, we've had, we had discussions, uh, over the last several months earlier about probably not even moving forward with a, uh, a winter or fall.
Yep.
Special town meeting, but the, uh, the state, um, requirements are what's driving having to have this meeting so that we can update the use table. It has to be in effect prior to, um, yeah, exactly.
So, but there is, of course, then, the, with this, although we don't at this time have any other warrants anticipated.
So, um, the town planner has proposed, uh, bringing the, uh, inclusionary, uh, zoning bylaw also at the same time. And, um, likely the treasure collector will want to bring forward an article, um, I don't know if you recall, the board had voted for the, um, senior tax, uh, piece for donations to be able to allow, is actually, um, statutorily required for town meeting to approve that.
Okay.
So the board, you know, has approved it in the sense of adding it to.
And that was the inclusion of an option when you submit your taxes of giving the.
Yep, so specifically, um, the next, um, the next excise tax that will go out, I think there's going to be a piece on there for voluntary donations for school, um, you know, for the school, uh, gift account essentially for scholarships, um, and the actual, this one, we actually have to, have to have a town meeting vote to approve.
Got it.
Not just the board of selectmen. So I think, um, Cheryl, the treasure collector, will plan to, uh, have a warrant article for that as well. Um, so we can just get that kind of, but those are, those are really the only, uh, you know, at this time.
At this time.
You know, and then, you know, there was always the conversation about, you know, the fire station thing, but at this point, this is all I, you know, and I'm anticipating.
Okay.
Close the business, Friday, you guys close at twelve?
Yeah.
So is it twelve PM?
Yes.
Or is it five PM?
It's.
Four PM?
It's twelve PM.
Make sure that's explicit?
It is on, it is on the public.
A letter that will be published.
All right, good.
Yeah, the published advertisement has it in here, but we can add it into this timeline too, yeah.
I don't know when it would ever show up at two o'clock.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, it's a good point.
Really?
So, the published advertisement.
I'm saying that quite facetiously, Chris.
So, all right, um, we had that, but, you know.
That's basically the only, are there any other issues that we think are gonna be there?
I think just the, the zoning articles and, um, the treasure col, you know, treasure collector, I don't, Andrew, you're not aware of anything else that might be? Yeah, I already mentioned that. Yeah, so I think just the zoning articles. He might have, he might be ready for, um, a bylaw, uh, article or two.
Yeah, you talked to, he was here tonight, might've talked to him for a minute.
Did he mention? I'll follow up with Bill, um, Coleman. He may, he may be ready to go on recommending a couple of bylaws. It'd be a good, um, a good meeting for that. But beyond that, yeah, we're not, I'm not expecting, it's a pretty short time around, you know, turnaround time between that.
What's the date? Is it February fourth, the planning board has their meeting, their hearing?
Yeah.
They're having a marijuana hearing, February fourth?
They have something scheduled in January.
Yeah, January fourth. January fourth or something, is it the second?
January second.
Second?
Second.
Yeah, that's right. It is. It's the first Tuesday.
It's my calendar today, so.
Yeah.
And when they have, uh, nuisance, uh, bylaw updates, that's part of what the Bill Coleman stuff is, so it's gonna be related.
Yeah.
Seven PM.
I'll follow up with, um, Bill Coleman, see if he's anticipating having anything ready by February ninth. Otherwise, it would probably be added to, uh, the annual.
Okay. All right, so I guess we just have to vote on that being the date. All those in favor of that being the date? Opposed?
No.
Okay.
All right.
Move to accept and approve.
We're not having one.
All right, let's see. Move to accept and approve Massachusetts general law, chapter fifty-four, section thirty-four, use of voting machines by sitting at cities and towns. Do a second.
I will second.
What's this one, Kevin?
So, um, Mr. Chair, this is a, um, as you noted, uh, Mass general law, chapter fifty-four, section thirty-four requires the board of selectmen or, uh, town or city council to vote to approve the new Immaculate precinct tabulators. The vote must occur no, not later than sixty days prior to a municipal election, uh, which the voting system will be first used. And the, so for us, the annual town election is, um, will be held on May first, two thousand eighteen. So this is a request by the town clerk, uh, as, you know, under the requirements of the statute to, um, approve it. The actual machines themselves, I think, I think we may even see by the end of this week. Have you heard an update on that? Yeah.
It's in your town report?
Does she, yeah.
Yeah, it's in.
Okay, yeah, so they're expected. Um, this has been an ongoing, uh, piece that, um, I think we actually started in the FY sixteen, carried over into FY seventeen budget, um, of, of getting, uh, these new tabulators.
Can I ask you a question, Kevin?
Yeah, sure.
So it reads, according to MGL, blah, blah, blah.
Right.
Board of Selectmen must vote to approve. Does that mean they must vote in order for this to be approved or must vote to approve? Because if they're telling me I must vote to approve, why am I bothering voting?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, it, it, it's the latter. There has to be a vote.
I have no choice?
There has to be, there has to be a vote of the board.
Okay.
Majority to approve it. Yeah, yeah, sorry.
So, just for fun, what if we decided we didn't wanna do this? We voted in a negative?
Well, then you go back to the, you know, the old system, I guess, right? I don't know how.
What's wrong with the old system anyways? I'm not sure. I, I, is there a reason we're updating? I mean, I'm, I'm playing ignorant here because I am. I don't, I know how we're updating. Is there something wrong with the current machines or are we changing the way we vote now or what?
Yeah, I think it's a state, this is, um, through the secretary's office. Isn't there a change in?
I don't know the specifics. We just put on the capital plan two years ago and, um, it was presented then. I don't recall the details, but it was end of life or required.
I think they, basically, I think there is a, a deadline that they, that communities have to meet.
What's the, um, what's the cost?
It was eighteen thousand?
Yeah, it was eighteen thousand. I think that's what's in your town administrator report.
It was thirty-four thousand for the, uh, capital that you didn't spend.
It was eighteen. It was over the course of a couple of fiscal years that they were procured.
So, we already have them?
We deliver next week.
Next week.
We've already paid for them?
Yes.
We'd have a lot of machines if we voted no.
Right.
What happened to the old machines?
This is the first that, that I had heard of, uh, a requirement to actually vote to, um, to switch over was, you know, back in the fall. Um, like I said, we planned on purchasing or replacing these because we had to, um, over the last two fiscal years, but the town clerk, I don't know if she just became aware of that requirement as well. Um, but it wasn't until late October that I became aware that we were required to actually have a vote, um, to, to move in that direction. I thought it was just a mandated, uh, thing that we had to comply with.
That was the rule.
Yeah.
All right, that's, um, yeah, yeah, okay.
I mean, uh, these work in a similar way to the old ones, in that, that you, you do a paper ballot and you enter them into the machine? Insofar as, like, they perform similarly. They're not actually an electronic voting machine. They're like.
That's right. They're, they're ballot readers.
Right.
Yeah. It's an electronic tabulator.
All right, so, since we already bought them.
We should use them.
All those in favor? Okay. Reserve fund transfer, Kevin?
Uh, okay, um, it's just a notice of, uh, reserve fund transfer, uh, for a total of fifty thousand amount requested um, for the unemployment, um, budget line item. The big driver here, um, was the end of FY seventeen, um, school layoffs is, uh, the majority of, of this. We have individuals that are filing for and collecting unemployment, um, beyond what was originally budgeted for or anticipated. And, uh, at this point in time, we've, we've essentially have, uh, pretty much expended all of, um, that budget. And the fifty thousand is, um, a pretty good estimate as to where we'll, we'll end up. But this is just notice to the, uh, the board of selectmen, um, that we're moving forward with finance committee, uh, request at their next meeting.
Got it.
Questions there? So these are just, uh, just as a side, these are some of the conversations I try to have, um, with the school department is, you know, as we think about the budget as a whole. Um, decisions on their end, whether, you know, um, there's a domino effect that, that drives other things too. So this is a town, uh, budget side issue that, um, you know, that we're now in a deficit, uh, of, so.
How does this compare to past years for unemployment?
Uh, this is, we, yeah, I mean, not in my time have we ever expended fully that. I mean, we've had other areas that, you know, unanticipated costs, whether it's legal or something like that, but our unemployment, um.
Past four years in the memo says average of thirty-eight thousand.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, missed that. Thank you.
I mean, I just knew that.
So we've been with, we've been within budget and have actually, we've been in, within budget and have actually turned back from that particular budget, uh, item. So this is, yeah, this is out of, out of the norm. Thanks.
This is a heads up, right?
Uh, this is just notice that, um, is required as part of the budget transfer request, um, approved by myself, given notice to the board of selectmen and ultimately, uh, it's finance committee's, um, approval. So that'll be going before them at their next, uh, FinCom meeting, yeah.
More than half a year, I remember already.
It's about a half a year, yeah.
Double foot.
Exactly.
Yeah, it said it's like two thousand a week too, so it adds up fast.
Okay.
Yep.
Budget discussion. But here's the budget discussion. Yes.
Timing.
What was the original appropriation for the unemployment fund and how many people have been on it and for how long? There's a limit as to how many weeks they can be on it.
Yeah, there is a limit. Um, the, I don't have the detail as to how many are on there. Do you have the? The origi, the original budget itself is fifty thousand.
How many people have been collecting?
That I don't know. The treasure collector has that breakdown. Um, I can find out, I mean, uh, exactly how many are on it. I mean, people have come on and off as, you know, they've, either they're, either they've, uh, expended their amount of weeks they're allowed or they've gotten, uh, new employment. Um, we've had, we've had a little bit of a both. It looks like the majority of those that, um, were part of the, um, end of year layoffs, the majority of those folks, um, are, you know, have been on it.
For what reason are they on the money?
Um, they were let go, uh, by the school department. Due to, you know, budget.
Sounds about right, if you say you had a, like, full of personnel.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, so there's a, a number of staff, yeah. Hey, David?
Good evening.
Okay, Kevin. Okay, Kevin.
So nineteen, um, wasn't anything that I really had to, um, present. I just wanted to have it on there in case, uh, there was, you know, if there was any updates. Um, you know, obviously, David and Chris, myself attended the last, uh, finance committee meeting, um, you know, given a little bit of an update as to, as to what that meeting, um, entailed. Um, the only other thing I'd wanna note on here is, uh, I mentioned it in my town administrator report as well, but, um, we did get a chance to meet with our Maya representatives and, as well as the folks from the insurance advisory committee providing an update. Um, fortunately, things are looking better, um, with regards to the town's, um, experience as it relates to claims. Um, so the ratio and, and the look back is looking better, so we may see a little bit more favorable, um, um, increase, you know, this year. Um, it'll still be a high increase, but, um, you know, I think, uh, you know, looking at it, um, it, it will look better, I mean, if you look at the, kinda what we have been talking about the last several years at our, uh, twenty-four month kinda look back, you know, we were running, um, you know, with HMO over a hundred percent. Um, and, you know, better on the PPO side, but now I think the latest run we looked at for HMO was around eighty-five, was it? Yeah, right around eighty, which is, which is good, that's about where we wanna be. You know, when Maya looks at these and the, um, actuaries kind of put together those numbers and, um, what they'll look at now is diving deeper into it, um, to kinda analyze, uh, you know, but they look at things like prognostices and the folks that are on it and kinda get a better trend.
Trend was just for the past four months with the new plan.
Correct, yeah.
And you look at twenty-four months of data, so we're still not great, but.
We're trending in the right direction, um, if it stays, if it stays the way it has sort of the last, uh, half a year anyway. Um, but ultimately, yeah, it's, ultimately, like, as every year, it's a twenty-four month look back, um, that they look at to make a determination based on, uh, on that. Um, and the other thing, I had mentioned it prior to, is, um, we're discussing the, uh, post-sixty-five, um, folks for retirees that were not Medicare eligible, they didn't have enough credits, um, at that time that we've, you know, I've mentioned, I've mentioned this before at a prior meeting. Um, looking at taking them off of our paid plan and putting them on a Medicare with a, um, with the Part B option, as they actually pay a penalty. Um, the town would pay that penalty on their behalf for moving them off of that plan and ultimately will be saving, um, money. I think it's gonna be about sixty-five thousand annually.
Might be a little more.
A little bit more. Um, on a conservative estimate, those, those eleven, um, you know, those eleven folks would probably will be able to see about a sixty thousand dollar savings delta, um, even including paying their premium, or their penalty rather for the Medicare. Um, they also will see a little bit of an actual, um, benefit to them in the sense of, uh, some of their, their premium, um, uh, cost may go down a little bit too. Um, so those are all positive things as we, uh, consider the budget impacts and some potential, uh, opportunities that we might see for, um, FY nineteen. Um, you know, there's no doubt it's going up, um, whether it hits the ten percent, um, mark that was kinda placeholdered in there is, is sort of still yet to be seen, but I think there's a, a good chance that, um, you know, we'll, we'll be able to, uh, bring the budget in less than that ten percent placeholder, which is good.
And our, um, I think we had talked about it in one of our previous meetings, but asking, you know, as, as you're working with, um, department heads and they're kinda coming in with their budgets.
Yes.
Kinda keeping track on this side, either things that they're not filling or things that they've left off so that.
Yeah, so.
As we're kind of preparing for the broader.
Absolutely.
Conversation that we kinda have that.
Right, so I've actually requested that, um, they all provide me with a, a memo, um, a detailed memo with not only items that are, you know, wish list or kinda things that they'd like to see as a, you know, potential level service or even growth budget, but things that, um, by following the budget directive, uh, potential service impacts that may be, uh, seen because of, um, you know, an item that they, they needed to, uh, you know, um, that they weren't able to ask for because of the budget directive. So, um, yeah, I've sent that all out to all the department heads, um, actually right up, the day after we had that meeting.
Cool.
Um, so I expect that they'll be submitting not only their, their directive, but also a memo where they can provide more detail and justify the reason for those requests.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep. That's all I had, again, I put it on there, there's not a lot of, uh, discussion at this point until kind of after, uh, after January, when they start to come in.
Okay. No, I just have public service announcement. Everybody oughta be checking their, uh, smoke detectors and CO2 detectors, but for the new year, change your batteries, make sure they work. Found out firsthand how those things work the other day, so.
True story.
Make sure the, um, make sure your batteries are fresh.
How they do work or don't work?
I found out how they do work, but everyone should know.
I hope you didn't have an emergency that made you sick.
Kick out of my house, kicked out.
Wow.
Kicked out, my wife wasn't even home to do it. So anyways, yeah, public service, I'm gonna check your smoke detectors and your CO detectors and make sure they work in good working order because, um, gets ugly quick, but, that's it. And then, happy holidays and safe new year to everybody and, uh, see you next year.
Mr. Chair, I just wanna add one thing to the TA report, jumped into you. If I could just, um, that isn't on there, um, folks may have noticed the, um, flag pole that has been installed and gone up, there is a flag coming, by the way. Um, it's gonna be a fairly significant sized flag. Flag pole was donated by the American Legion, um, has been installed and will be in addition up there on my field, but there is a flag coming, it's on order and, uh, you know, that area will get, uh, tidied up, I'm sure.
Definitely lived up to its advertising.
I'm sure you've noticed it.
It is a notable pole.
I think it's eighty, eighty feet, I think.
At the field, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's eighty feet.
What did they, what did they talk about, they talked about?
We had that on Veterans Day.
Veterans Day, yeah, so, but there is, if people are asking, the pole's there, but there's no flag, the flag is coming.
Okay.
Oh, we hadn't noticed that.
He said, he, um, Ed Sakalowski said that, um, they were waiting to put the flag up because they need to run electricity to the pole in order to illuminate it because it's gonna be such a big flag.
So I'm not sure, yeah, so there's no, they're not able to do a solar one? Is that what they said?
Well, he just said they were running electricity.
Yeah, if the flag's gonna be up, it has to be illuminated, so. That was it, sorry.
All right, um, anything, Melissa?
Um, the only thing I have is I saw in the TA report that the census reports are coming out, so I just wanted to encourage everyone to fill those out because that's what was allegedly the cause of people being unenrolled to vote during the special election. So to fill them out and get them back into the town so we can ensure that doesn't happen when we go to vote.
On the first.
Yeah.
Terrence?
Yeah, I wanted to say, uh, shameless plug, the Drake Hills Foundation Jingle All The Way Race was a great success, we had these two selectmen that actually participated in the event and, uh, both lived. Through it, so it was quite a, quite a turnout. I think the police did a fantastic job of making it safe and, for the most part, all the autos behaved themselves while they were waiting and it wasn't that long and the route was nice, it was fun. There was quite a few people outside cheering people on, it was, uh, and we had a little bit of snow when it started, so it was actually kinda nice, so. Talked to Greg about it and he was very, very pleased with the turnout and he's, you know, reinforced his happiness with being here and doing this, so. Thank you to DPW, thank you to everybody else at Town Hall and of course both police and fire for helping get this done.
Great.
Yeah, it was a big turnout.
Yeah, a thousand registered, I think.
Eleven hundred?
Eleven hundred, yeah.
David?
Yeah, well, um, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everybody and, um, you know, tonight, um, it was the second time in the last week and a half that I've gone to an event for the schools. And, um, each time that a parent has an opportunity to go see the, you know, the band or whatever it happens to be, tonight it was band, the other night, last Wednesday, it was concert of, um, of chorus and the band. Um, but you get an opportunity to see the value of the Maynard education in the arts and the fact that these kids are starting, my daughter's in eighth grade, but the kids started in sixth grade tonight. Um, and just the fantastic job and effort that the kids make and that the teachers make to educating the kids, last week's high school concert was outstanding. Um, but the education that they're getting from, uh, from the perspective of the arts is just, um, outstanding. So I encourage anybody, it's, it's, the play is coming up in this, in the late, uh, winter. Um, they're doing, I think it's, uh, the Under the Sea thing, whatever that is from Disney.
The Little Mermaid.
Little Mermaid. You know, go to see it.
You don't know, you don't know about the Little Mermaid and Ariel and the whole rest of them, you don't know the name.
Go to see it because it's, you know, that's what Maynard is with their, with our schools and education. So I just thought it was a great thing and I'm sorry I missed our meeting, but I had an enjoyable time at the, uh, at the concert.
We had a lot of fun here too.
I'm sure you did.
Cheryl?
Nothing to add other than, you know, best of the holidays to everyone and see you in the new year.
Absolutely.
Safe travels.
Safe travels. I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn, the last time in two thousand seventeen. Melissa seconded it, all in favor? Thank you, everybody.
Couldn't you leave it, were you trying something?
Nineteen minutes. Nineteen minutes.